The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATB2, Oshkosh Community Media Services, the City of Oshkosh, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to I am Oshkosh. Cheryl Hens here, along with Dan Ryland. And we're very pleased on this addition to be joining a couple of folks who are running for the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. There are five candidates seeking three positions. Two of them are here tonight with us. The first one is Steve Eliasen. And we're very pleased, as I said, to have Steve here. And so thanks for coming on out tonight.
Great to be here. Thanks.
We always start out with political candidates by asking them to tell us a little bit about themselves and why they're getting into, you know, this crazy field of politics. So go for it.
Yeah. Well, my background is, from a professional standpoint, advertising photography. I've been sort of my whole life through an advertising photographer in the Fox Valley, though I've traveled nationally and internationally to some degree in that field. I'm a father of three children. I'm married. I have been in Oshkosh for about 13 years, though I did spend a number of years growing up at Winnicott County. And really, the bid for the school board seat stems from the involvement with my wife and I in very intimate way with our school's educational process. Our children were in the UCS system originally, so we led a couple of programs, which I can get into more detail if it makes sense, also with the Alps Charter School, where they both are now students. We've been quite involved with projects and the education being on the Governance Council. And actually, the bid comes from suggestion from some people saying that, you know, perhaps running for the board would be a good thing. So I decided to.
So you're really a parent with children in the system?
Absolutely.
That's important, I think.
Yeah. Other than kind of folks encouraging you and interest in it, is there maybe one or two things that are going on in the district right now here in Oshkosh that kind of have gotten into your, stuck in, sticking in your craw, maybe just a little bit, or gotten under your skin?
I don't know if I'd say sticking in my craw, though there is a great motivation. I think that these really challenging times might lend themselves to sort of bigger, more open, more creative solutions than we might have in less stressed financial times.
Yeah.
You know, I have an ideal that we would make Oshkosh a sort of destination, if you will, from an educational standpoint, from a community standpoint. And so I think if we could get to a point where people around the state, around the area, around the world said, wow, they're doing something really remarkable in Oshkosh, I think that'd be a great thing. And I'd like to set that as our benchmark.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds aspirational, but I'd like to move in that direction. At the same time, there seems to be a real, the disconnect, that sort of battle between property taxpayers and professional educators or people, you know, staff people in the system, it seems that there's way too much bad blood out there and ill will. And it seems to me the teachers are doing quite a remarkable job, and the taxpayers are doing quite a remarkable job funding that. And it seems to me if we could just sort of elevate the level of discourse and try to make some harmony there, we could do some really good things.
Well, speaking of discourse, you know, I want to get to, shortly, we're going to talk about the most recent school board meeting that was held at Alberta Kimball. But prior to that, there were a couple of very public, very well-attended meetings that the district went out of their way to hold for the public to talk about the upcoming school year's budget, the problems that the district has, the financial constraints and so forth. These were, like I said, very well-attended, but there were a couple of people who weren't in attendance. And it was the school board president, Ben Schneider, and the incumbent, who's one of your challengers this time around, one of your opponents, Dan Becker. They weren't at either meeting. Did you go to either of the meetings?
I did not. And as I recall, the timing was such that we were actually leading a group of Alps students to a field trip in Florida, in South Florida, where we did some snorkeling and sailed in a regatta.
Okay.
And I recall those were, that was the same week, although I'm not positive in that, but I know that was sort of a conflict as it was.
Sure. But if you were on the board, and I think that that's where the clincher really comes here, at least for me, and I think for you, because we've talked about this, you know, the board members really should have made every effort possible to be at those, especially one, if they couldn't make both.
Absolutely.
You know, if you were to get elected to the board, Steve, would you, you know, take a pledge to be at meetings like that, rather than just sort of dissing them?
Absolutely, given the rare exception where somehow, you know, you can't, right? I mean, on occasion.
Absolutely.
But something of that import, yeah, I think you should move heaven and earth to be there.
Well, and especially when the rhetoric after that was, well, those meetings were stacked with biased people and this kind of thing. Hey, at least they took the time to show up.
Absolutely.
You know, so, well, then that brings us to the next big meeting that was very heavily attended. Do you want to move into that one right away?
Sure. Did you attend that or view that?
I did. I was there for the duration.
What were your insights into that meeting?
Oh, you know, I'd have to say that as somebody who is new to board watching and to the system as a whole, as opposed to a classroom at a time kind of peering into the system, I have to say I was amazed certainly by the discourse of the students, the appeals, the articulate, impassioned desire to have really good schools and a really good education at a very high level. I was amazed. And I thought it was very civilly handled and well-done. I, too, was amazed by the board members, that, as a whole, that I, at the end of that, I thought, whether, no matter what side of the spectrum you're on, economically or politically, I thought it was handled awfully well. And I walked away with sort of more respect for people at sort of every position than I had before, from the sort of soundbites that I'd heard, and from the bits and pieces, and the biases you come into it with. So I thought a good exchange, of course, like our political debate nationally today, it's easy to say, cut my taxes, or give me this. But an appeal without a sound funding mechanism does ring somewhat hollow.
Right.
Because I fully agree that keeping a broad array, especially of advanced placement courses, especially foreign language, is critical. We have to find a way to pay for it, right?
Okay, I'm gonna nail you with a zinger here. Day before yesterday, in Northwestern, John Lemberger, who is a member of the board, was quoted as saying, this is regard to the Kimball meeting, "I just thought there was a lot of paranoia on the part of students. They came in with conclusions that it will hurt their schedules, and maybe they should have waited until they understood what's going on." To me, that's a slap at the students. Paranoid on the part of students?
Paranoid, perhaps. And again, coming at this as an outsider, not administrator, not a school of education professor.
Right, right. I understand.
It seems to me that some of that, some of what might be cut, might be a worst-case scenario, and there's a way to kind of build back in some of those courses.
Sure.
Right through some creative mechanism.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I think, how's this for the ultimate middle-of-the-road stance?
It's okay.
I think there's some truth in it.
Okay.
I think there's some truth to it, but that might be overstating the case.
Now, the last part just blows me, where they should have waited until they understood what's going on. We've been reading the newspaper for the last two years that the school district doesn't know what's going on. They don't know the scenario they talked about at their meeting, about what classes were going to not exist at all, and now the principals are defensive because, and so it seems to me that the board doesn't know what's going on.
Well, and that paranoia, if you want to call it that, was predicated by the school district's own report.
That's right.
Their own report led people to believe that. And I think that's what I find really offensive about Lemberger's comments.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, as a parent, you know, if your children were up there speaking as articulately as some of these kids were the other night, you know, and then you have a school board member come back and make that kind of a comment about so-called paranoia on their part, I mean, how would you feel?
Yeah, certainly at a personal level, though of course you take it personally, right? So I think it could have been handled better. You know, I guess part of this bid for the seat is that if that whole level can come up a little bit and they just sort of, sorry to do the kumbaya a lot, but if we...
No, no, no. But I just thought it was an odd statement to make.
Right.
I don't know why he said it, to be honest with you, but that's unnecessary, I think. Go one further.
Sure.
You mentioned at the beginning that you're involved in charter schools. Your kids are in charter schools?
Yes, the Alps Charter School.
You know, I think that's really a good opportunity to, clearly that must indicate you as a parent that charter schools offer something that's better for your children's education than maybe the mainstream. So maybe you could just explain why you got into charter schools? What are charter schools?
Oh, I'd be happy to, as much as I know about charter schools, it's sort of the one school, although certainly...
Yeah, well, more than what we know.
Okay. Our children were in the UCS system, and we had a terrific experience since, you know, the very early preschool years.
Okay.
We found, first of all, our daughter, then in fourth grade, drifting away a little bit on her academic performance and seemingly bored in classes. So I think something that works good across the spectrum might not work for the individual who is especially creative, especially engaged in some unique way. So we had a fantastic experience from the first email. My wife initiated the contact, said, maybe Alps is for us. And the staff was just fantastic about getting back, and here's what we do, we'd love to have you in, we'd love to have you see it. And it was a place that I found that, I mentioned this sailing program that I initiated, where it was sort of many weeks of looking at the world through the lens of sailing.
Sure.
Not just sailing, but the design world and the world of nations and of languages. And the embrace of new ideas and new ways, and an outsider coming in to run this program, and trusting kids in the water, and letting this whole, of course, I'm close to it, this whole thing blossom in a beautiful way, was remarkable. And it makes me, not that every school necessarily can be a charter school, although maybe it can, but I would love to have every student, you know, have that opportunity available for every student where this can be this fantastic creative workshop every day.
Going back, and this sort of ties in too with the board meeting that, you know, was held at Alberta Kimball, but during the two public sessions, the resounding message was, from the majority of folks, you know, raise our taxes, but don't cut programs, don't cut teachers, don't, you know, keep things intact. The education that our kids are getting is important.
I did read the synopsis, and that seemed to be the...
Yeah. And yet, it doesn't seem like the board paid any attention to that. They voted the other night to cut the full-time equivalent of 35 teachers, increase class sizes, and, you know, their report that they're now sort of backpedaling on and doing some damage control on, you know, had the potential to affect about 1,800 or 1,900 students between the two high schools, and it did suggest the possibility of cutting about 110 classes. That's significant. And what do you make of a board that basically has thumbed its nose on what those people who took time out of their schedules to go to those meetings said?
It would seem that there's a preordained agenda to people who defy the public will, right? And of course, one would have to be more scientific to know if that really is the broad consensus, or whether it's a segment, but whatever it is, it's a voice, and it's loud and strong, and it's certainly part of the dynamic out there. You know, I say I'm sort of an outsider or a contrarian, perhaps. I'm one who thinks that property taxes, as relates to school funding, is one of the great buys in the world, one of the great values out there. I'll make this personal, but I have a relative who lived in suburban Milwaukee who would complain about his property tax every year. Whatever the bill was, $6,000, had four kids in public schools, and I would bite my tongue, but I think you should be thanking your neighbors profoundly, and people who don't have, you know, you're getting an amazing buy for $6,000 a year to have four kids going to public schools at $10,000 or $12,000 per kid per year. And I think, it seems to me there's a way to make that case to property taxpayers, although I assume it's been tried before, but I don't know how, I don't know how you don't look at it that way, that it's a great investment for the city, and people spend $4,000 a year on lots of things that aren't as important.
Okay.
Clearly, if you're elected to the board, one of the issues will be how high you will go from where you can go on taxes. Just listening, I assume that you would not be opposed to going up on more taxes.
I'm, I'd say as a blanket statement, I'm not opposed to going up. I think that what, you know, what's critical is making a strong case, making it of value to the property taxpayer.
Right, right.
And just some, I think just laying out some simple data that, you know, maybe it's me, but I think the case is pretty easy to make.
Yeah. The late Justice Brown dies, I think, was quoted as saying that taxes are the price we pay for civilization.
Right. And right, and the flip side is, okay, I've heard people say, I don't want to pay any taxes. Well, do you want to live in Somalia? Do you want to live in Zimbabwe? I mean, there are no tax places. I don't think there are places you want to live.
Yeah. Clearly, the next three years, if you're elected, aren't going to be, we don't know what, you know, we know revenues are down at the state level. It could be as bad, or conceivably even worse, in successive budgets, which is really scary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One, my sense again is that the low-hanging fruit has already been plucked, right?
Yeah, that's right. Where do you go from there?
Right.
Yeah. There are no cuts in athletics that I could glean from, maybe there's some classes, but I, we have two athletic directors. Do you think this board is too soft on cutting athletics? I know it's popular among parents and kids, but it seems to be that the brunt is against foreign languages, technology, business, and I don't hear any sports cuts.
Yeah, I would come, you know, I'm, our family and my orientation is that of sort of lifetime sports that enrich the person, things like cross-country skiing, sailing, snorkeling, those sorts of things. So I would certainly be a voice to move away from, I don't want to pit this, my sport against your sport, or my sport is better. But I don't see a lot of merit to football, other than the fact that it's wildly popular, especially in this part of the country, especially in this part of the state, right? So I, you know, I would greatly slash football and implement sailing for every kid.
Well, there you go.
How's that?
Well, the booster clubs just, take a second look.
And I mean just, I mean just football, but...
Yeah, no, I understand. But I mean, it seems to me there should be a balance in cuts, and I just, I don't see any balance on cuts. It's all academic programs.
Absolutely. And I have to say that, you know, in my career as a photographer, the importance of being able to deal with people from other countries and other languages, I couldn't say enough how critical that's been. And maybe it's a unique field, and maybe most people won't have those experiences, but just to have some cultural awareness when meeting a German chemical engineer for the first time is hugely helpful. I work for a German company now, and we can't enough language and foreign travel, and so I...
I think the debate should be on whether we have foreign languages in elementary schools, whether we're going to cut it at middle school or high school.
Absolutely. And I know, and I don't know if it's still the case, but I know Manascha, close by, had immersion schools at the elementary level, and I know Milwaukee's had immersion schools, and wow, I'd sure move in that direction.
Yeah.
One of the things that we've been hearing things about often on, Steve, is, you know, the district is working with a consultant right now, excuse me, to look at the insurance benefits provided to the teachers and probably the administrative staff as well. The consultants are saying, well, you know, we feel like we can, through creatively putting things in place, save about $2 million a year, possibly even starting this spring already. Would it maybe have been a little bit more prudent for the board, in your opinion, to wait? I mean, we're already almost into March, by the time this show airs, I think it will be March 1st at least. You know, spring, we're almost into spring. So, you know, would it maybe not have been smarter for them to wait and see what the consultants could come up with before making this blank decision to just, you know, cut some teachers and increase class sizes?
Yeah, right offhand, I'd say so. And as I understand the way that transpired, I found that a bit troubling, too, that was, as I understand, just sort of sprung, or kind of a, kind of a knee-jerk implementation of the consultants. So, yeah, I think waiting before the big cuts, and I think, you mentioned something sticking in my craw, healthcare is one, one that does. I have some pretty harsh terms for the health insurance industry. And it seems to me, here's one where the district, I would hope, could find wildly creative solutions to being subservient to what I call the American system of organized crime healthcare. And maybe that is something as far-reaching, and I haven't researched, and I haven't made any phone calls yet, but maybe Health Canada would be happy to have our, you know, 1,000 employees, and for elective procedures, we can fly to Toronto and save the district some money, and our teachers gain a little more world experience, and have a nice trip and it all, and anything that we can do to not be subject to 39% premium increases for apparently no reason, at least as Kathleen Sebelius, you know, termed it.
Okay.
I want to turn to special ed or development of disabled children for a little bit. Autism numbers in the school system in 2004, 2005 was 54. In the current school year, it's doubled. It's up to 114 for autistic children. Do you have any thoughts about that? And then my second question is, the parents of special ed kids seem to complain that their kids are continually leapfrogging from one school to another, not in their home district, or not in their home school area. Do you have any thoughts about autism and trying to give some stability to these families who have special ed kids, that their kids can be assured that when they start grade one, they're going to kind of stay with that school, rather than move, 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 move?
Well, I have to claim very little knowledge on special ed programs in the district, but right offhand, I'd say that, yeah, if there's a way to minimize moving or leapfrogging, I think we should make every effort to do so.
Yeah, okay.
Without knowing the specifics.
I understand.
It's tough.
But it is an issue. And I think administration is trying to go with a more clear pattern of continuity in a certain school, but there is some objection to it. Anyway, if you get on the board, that's an issue, I think, that's pretty important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What about the closure of some schools? Now, we haven't heard what the district is going to do about that, if anything. We've heard a lot of names kind of floated around in the last couple of years, but nothing definitive, and, you know, there are still some names on the chopping block, if you will. How do you feel about the closing of schools? And, you know, should a school ever be closed, or should it be kept open at any cost?
My basic orientation is that smaller neighborhood schools build a strong community. And if I can partly add it to our parish life, you know, we went through consolidation in the community, and I found it really rocky and somewhat devastating, and really had an impact. And I think people like small, intimate communities, where they know everybody well. And so I think, just offhand, it would seem like in schools, that's a good thing. Okay. Obviously, word of the wall, and something, you know, if that's the only option, well then it's the only option, right? But I would, you know, but I think on the whole topic of buildings, and again, without having, you know, really analyzed the financial data and the cost of operating and the cost of renovation, I have to believe, like we're seeing in other parts of the world, there's a more creative way of dealing with space than the model of a century ago, where we built buildings and put in furnaces, and we were continually roofing. I wonder about, I wonder about some architectural commission, whether for a local architect or students, or the best Spanish architect, to say, what can you do with our space here? And there isn't a much better modular, mobile, award-winning solution out there that gets us on the map and saves money and does a lot of beautiful things.
Okay.
How about boundary changes and equalizing the population between the two high schools? Those have been board issues that have been here all the time I've been co-hosting this show, and they're both still unresolved.
Yeah, you know, I have to, I have to say that I've certainly been on the periphery of that conversation, right?
It's probably a good place to be.
It's a happy place.
It's happier.
And of course, there's the economic component that you hear, you know, the sort of street word, is there's a strong socioeconomic component.
Right.
To the division and the way that all shakes out.
Exactly.
Among the respective schools. I understand that in France, schools from lower-income areas receive greater federal funding. And I think, offhand, that seems like a worthwhile model. So anything we can do to equalize the component of economics, I think we should do.
Now, the sage schools for grades one through three are kind of a component of that, lower class size and a stipend for schools in the district that are defined as economically back.
And I don't know the current status of, I assume that's sort of reassessed year by year, is that, I don't know offhand how the...
Well, and there is some board people would like to get rid of it.
Yeah.
But I think it's a state, if you have sage schools, you get more per student in those grades one through three, if I'm talking about it right.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of like the France thing, is that there is more money going.
Absolutely.
Plus, we know in lower grades that those are, that's the best bang for your buck.
Right, right.
You know?
Right.
So lower class size is important.
Yes.
I didn't mean to talk on that, but...
Well, can I bring up something about the school superintendent? I mean, by the time this show airs, the decision will probably have been made, and so it will probably be a moot point at that point. But as we're taping it, as of today, the school board was supposed to be making a decision on the school superintendent of its choice tomorrow, which would be Friday the 19th. And now, today, they've postponed that selection.
I'd not heard.
Amazing.
So, yeah, I just, Carl Lowenstein had a little tweet about it this afternoon. That's the only place I saw it. But that apparently has happened. You know, none of us really knows why it happened, because this is kind of news to us, but just in general, speaking about the superintendent candidates, did you go to the public reception for them?
I did not.
Do you have a feeling on the candidates at all?
I have to confess to not, and this was simply one of those weeks where, you know, my photo life prevented me from, I work in Green Bay most days, so I just probably couldn't make it at that four o'clock to five o'clock hour at the public library.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But did you read their resumes? Do you have some feeling about the candidates in general?
Yes, the Northwestern Review, you know, the accounts of the resumes. I don't. I have to say that I don't, and I think, you know, as a board member, there's nothing like the interview process, right, or sending some real time.
Sure.
So I have to say that I don't offhand have a...
Yeah. Plus, the decision would be made before he's on the board.
Right.
But still, it's important.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you this, and I don't say it in a way to, you know, kind of attack your work or anything, but you've said a couple of times now that you've not attended some of these more important things because of work and because you were on a pre-arranged trip. If you're elected to the board, how will you juggle those kinds of things, then, to be at these very important functions?
It's a fair question, it's a more than fair question. And it's simply a case that, you know, it has to be a top priority, it has to, it has to come, you know, if I, whatever rearranging I have to do with my photo or income-producing life, I'll have to do, and I do see it as sort of a ratcheting up of the stakes once on the board as compared to a candidate.
Right.
So...
Okay, but you would, as you say, ratchet that up if need be, if you're elected?
Absolutely.
So, okay, just so the public has some assurance that, you know, we won't be hearing those kinds of things in the future as far as why you can't make a meeting or whatever. You'd make a concerted effort to be there.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, good.
I want to talk about First Amendment. For students, hypothetical question. Let's say that a family of Islamic faith moves into the Oshkosh School District, and their daughters want to wear the scarf to school.
Yeah.
And it becomes a political issue. Where would you stand on something like that?
I'm, I am, if I'm an absolutist about anything, it's about the First Amendment, especially in an era where I believe a Pew Center survey found that most Americans don't agree with the First Amendment. I think that is a perilous place for us as a nation, for the nation. So I would say a burka is fine. I would, you know, yeah, and I think, I'd go a long way on the right to free speech.
Okay.
Okay. You know, why don't you take about 45 seconds or so, and just look into camera three there, Steve, and tell folks why they should, you know, why they should vote for you, you know, on Tuesday, what is it, April 6th, I think, is the next, the general election? And maybe what distinguishes you from the other candidates?
Well, I'd ask for your vote and the chance to serve the community of Oshkosh on the school board. As a voice for relentless, creative solutions to the problems that we have before us, I would see a strong movement towards non-traditional areas, though they're important and that we need to keep what we have. But, for example, I was serious when I said I think every student in Oshkosh should kayak or ski or sail. I think much more outdoor time, like some of the Waldorf schools are doing. I think we should have a goal that every sixth grader spend a week in some Canadian school in Sault Ste. Marie or Windsor, Ontario, because we happen to live very close and it's a very feasible economical solution to get every student some, some international experience. And I think if we emerge with students with a much greater grasp of the world, the community and the world benefits. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Just sit tight right there, and we're going to take a short break. When we come back, Carl Lowenstein, also a candidate for the Oshkosh School Board, will be here. We'll be right back.
Nice to meet you and good luck.
Thank you so much, Jan. Appreciate it.
Dear Mom and Dad, well, I finally have some time off, so I'm writing to tell you that I'm doing well. We have good days and bad days over here. We try to remember the good ones and get through the bad ones. Mostly, we have each other, and that's what keeps us going. And Mom, since you asked, if anyone wants to help, just tell them to contact the USO. You can't believe how much they do for us. With love, your son, Michael.
Every year, the U.S. Department of the Treasury receives about 1.4 million reports of problems with paper checks. Checks can be lost, stolen, or delayed. If you still receive social security payments by paper check, Treasury wants you to know about a safer, more convenient way to get your money. The Direct Express Prepaid Debit Mastercard. The Direct Express card is new and is available to anyone receiving social security benefits, even if you don't have a bank account. Your monthly benefits will be automatically placed onto your card account each month on the day your money is due. While other debit cards cost money, it is possible to use the Direct Express card for free to make purchases, pay bills, and get cash at thousands of locations nationwide. There are no sign-up or monthly account fees, no more waiting for the mail, or worrying about lost or stolen checks. Call 1-877-212-9991, or visit www.usdirectexpress.com.
We were in an emergency situation. We don't have extra. We have a little bit of water and a little bit of food. A meeting place, no.
No.
I don't think we have a first aid kit.
We have tuna fish, we have beans, we have canned tomatoes, you know?
That's true, but that's really not survival food, tomato paste.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And welcome back to the second half of Eye on Oshkosh. And Carl Lowenstein is here now. He is another of the five candidates seeking three seats on the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. And thanks very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Welcome to the show.
Thank you.
Of course, the other candidates, you know, we just interviewed one. Steve Dito was interviewed a few weeks back.
Right.
He was interviewed very early on. And Dan Becker will be here in a, in a few weeks. And John Daggett will, will not be appearing on the program. So that covers the candidates. So anyway, welcome again. We appreciate your being here. And we always start out with political candidates by asking them to tell us a little about themselves and why they're running for office.
Sure. Well, first of all, I'm running for office because I became very concerned with the school board in the last couple of years. But in particular, my interest was energized when my son entered kindergarten. And in kindergarten, at Washington Elementary, they had really overfilled classrooms and some real behavioral problems and some issues in those classrooms. And so as a parent, I got very involved working with the teachers, working with the principal. And then we went down to central office, and we talked to Betty Lang, and we worked with the administrators down there, and we got those students some extra help so that both kindergarten classes weren't overloaded and weren't, you know, faced with really intractable problems in terms of those classrooms. And so we made, we made a positive change there, and that inspired me to think that obviously that kind of effort and that kind of energy is what we need on the school board. And as I've, I followed school board politics for many years, but I haven't really been actively involved. And it's clear to me that we need a different, I think, sense of purpose on the school board. And so that's the real thing that I want to do in terms of serving on the school board is help us focus on, you know, what our real goals are, to focus on education, to make sure that when we make decisions, that we start with what, how is this going to affect our students' learning? How is this going to affect Oshkosh educational system? And then make the kind of decisions that we need to, whether that's cuts, whether that's, you know, dealing with revenue issues, however we go with that. We should put education at the center and, and have a plan so that we can say, the things we do will make things better, and the things we do will have long-term benefit for the, for the district in which we live. And so much of what goes on in the board, you know, I've been going to meetings now for four or five months, doesn't seem to have any of that kind of foresight. And that's the kind of thing that really drives me to be interested in the board. Let's think about the future first and then come back and think about how we can realize that future, rather than start with all the short-term, you know, patches that seem to dominate the thinking of our, of our board at the moment.
And tell us a little about yourself, what your background is.
Right. Well, I teach, I teach history at the university. I am a specialist in Russian history. My particular area of interest is Soviet writers in the 1950s. And I became very interested in the ways that Soviet writers manipulate and dealt with a real authoritarian state that was changing in a very brief period. The period in Soviet history is called the thaw, and it's the moment after Stalin died, society opened up for just a minute, and the first people really into that gap were creative writers who said, we have a positive vision for the future, please listen to us, please change the society. We're not ready to give up the society, we want to change it. And they proposed a lot of changes in a variety of different forums, in a variety of different ways, in a very hopeful way. But unfortunately, the leadership never came around to that view and clamped down on them and kind of turned back the clock by the time we get to the early 60s.
I sense that Russian theme of change is a theme that you'd like to take to the school board.
Well, there's a couple of things in that. One is that there's, it's one of those moments about hope, right? In some ways, these people who had been under a really incredibly horrific system for many years still were hopeful that they could improve things and make an impact and change the system. The problem in the end is they could never get their bosses to sign up on that, to sign in for that. And so it was a real moment of energy and excitement and enthusiasm. And in many ways, I think it begins the downfall of the Soviet Union in that there is a very, very positively inclined towards the project and against the state. And yet, the state refused to yield, and they gave up on the project.
Sure.
And from that point, I think you can start talking about the collapse of the Soviet Union.
Okay. You know, you've, you've talked about some of the things that I guess you're less than enchanted with on the school board and what the school district is doing. Can you talk about some of those, Paul?
Well, I think that, as I said, as I think about and I watch the school board, the problem really is, is that we haven't decided what we want the district to look like. A few years ago, I guess it was 2008 now, we, the board approved a 10-year plan. It was obviously rejected by the community in a very, you know, in the series of elections, but the board never went back. They didn't say, okay, well, that plan was rejected, now we have to start over from the beginning and say, okay, well, what does, do we, what does the community, you know, what do we need to do to make the best educational system possible? Instead, it's become timid and reactive. And I'd like to see, and in so many cases, even that it seems that there is a panic at the last moment, oh, my gosh, we didn't know this was coming, now we have to close a school. Oh, my gosh, there's another budget deficit, what are we going to do? We better choose something. I don't know, you know, why? It's unclear. You know, so there's no rationale, and there's no reason in a lot of the decision-making that we see. And, and I think that we need a better sense of that. I mean, clearly, you know, it's not Betty Lang's fault, but she's an interim leader. She doesn't have a chance to create her own vision for the system. The board hasn't, isn't able to figure out what their own vision is. And so we sort of, we sort of stumble from crisis to crisis and are always, you know, can't make a sound decision because we haven't taken the time to step back and say, this is where we want to go, this is what we want to do. And so my goal on being on the school board right away is to say, all right, we need a vision. Let's stop doing what we're doing until we can say, we want the district to look like this. These are the goals that are important to us, and how do we achieve those goals? And then we can go back and say, okay, well, to achieve this goal, maybe we do have to reduce the number of teachers at the high school. Or maybe we do have to close an elementary school, or, you know, whatever the question might be. Now, you know, again, I don't know for sure, but every time they do that in the last year or so, there doesn't seem to be any rationale except that, well, we have to save money now.
You'd agree, though, that the board is sort of a legislative function and the superintendent is more of an administrative function? So clearly, part of that has to come from the new superintendent, right?
Oh, absolutely. I did attend all three public listening sessions for the new superintendents.
Can you share your thoughts on that a little bit?
I think actually the board did a very good job selecting the finalists. I thought each of them brought different strengths to the table. I think it'll be a hard decision for the board to choose which one of those people would be best for the district. But at the same time, each of them really proposed a model of figuring out how to re-envision the school district. In particular, the last two candidates, Don Viget and Kathleen Williams, both talked about a process where they would start by figuring out how to understand what we need and what the community wants as the place where they would start this discussion. And so that they would do, they would start that planning process by bringing in stakeholders in all parts of, from Oshkosh, you know, talking to, you know, the disparate communities here, and trying to start with rebuilding an idea of where we should be going. And then, as they both said, then you start moving in those directions, and then you can make sensible decisions about the finances.
Sure. Well, a couple of things I want to touch on there, but I guess first and foremost, since we're on the subject of the school superintendent, I saw you tweet this afternoon that they have postponed, that the board has postponed making its decision, you know, on the superintendent. Now, by the time this show airs, that decision will probably already be made. But do you, have you talked with anyone, Carl? Do you know why that decision was made? You're the only one that I've heard that from. I didn't see that on the Northwestern site or anything.
Well, this afternoon, I just, I'm on the mailing list, and they send out the notices of public meetings, and they sent out a meeting notice last week that said Friday they're going to deliberate, and then after their deliberations, there would be a public, a public statement of their choice, you know, pending negotiations and whatever else they do to finalize the contract. But it came out this afternoon that that same agenda came out with the public announcement of the selection crossed off. And to me, that means, of course, I don't know why that has changed, and I don't know if they think that they'll need more deliberation, but it just, it seemed to me it'd be a change from what there was before, that it said clearly deliberation, public announcement of the new superintendent. This time, it is just deliberation. So maybe they're thinking they might not have enough time or that...
So the schedule could still be on, but the public portion would be off.
They're clearly meeting.
Okay.
They're clearly going to discuss it, but the part that said they were going to publicly announce the finalist or the candidate was removed. So I don't think there'll be a public announcement of the candidate. Why that is, I don't know.
Because they were so open with what we've seen on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday night this week.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So they may just need more time, or, you know, they're afraid that, you know, maybe it's just not, I don't know how these things work, so I can't really, I can't really say.
We asked Steve a little bit about the public forums, the two nights, and then the one at the Kimball Auditorium. Did you attend any of those, and what were your thoughts on them?
I went to both public forums.
Okay.
And I thought they were incredibly enlightening for someone who, you know, is just getting into this, trying to figure out what's going on. I learned a huge amount. And I think, you know, the, the passion in the community, their desire to see better schools, you know, came out clearly. And so it was a very, very eye-opening, eye-opening situation for me. So I thought it was a great, great and useful tool. And as I think I've said as well on my, on my website, is that I was disappointed that more members of the board didn't make it. Because I think that, again, we don't, one of the things that's missing, let me put this in a different way, is that there's clearly a trust problem with our, between the school board and the community and the teachers and the students. And we need to rebuild that trust. And one of the ways is missing is that line, those lines of communications. The school board, many times, whether it's true or not, doesn't seem to be paying attention to the community. And, you know, especially these people who are, you know, are deeply involved and deeply interested in the school board and school issues. And those forums were, you know, a good opportunity at least to listen. You don't have to agree with the people who are there. You don't have to, you know, you don't have to say, oh, my decisions are going to be swayed one way or the other. But you have to make good decisions, and those good decisions should come with all the information that's available to you, and listening to what parents have to say and students and, and the community, and the community members who are there expressing their things.
What did you think of the student presentations at the Kimball Auditorium?
Oh, it was wonderful. I was, I was astounded. The passion, the sincerity, the dedication of those students to turn out, you know, to stay for hours, the students stayed all the way to the end, they cheered each other on, they supported one another. They were very, very, they were great.
Well, let me just jump in here
Yeah, I'm sorry.
because I want to kind of follow up on that and the two public meetings on the budget. So Carl, what do you make of a school board then? That, you know, you talk about how these superintendent candidates want to, at least one of them wants to, you know, reach out and see what the public wants. Well, we've had several opportunities now to hear what the public wants. So what do you make of a school board that some of the members don't show up to either of the public forums or public meetings on the budget? And then the people who are there overwhelmingly say, we don't want things cut, we'd rather you raise our taxes a little bit. School board dismisses that concept, and the ones, two of the ones in particular who weren't at the meetings said, oh, those people were biased and the meetings were stacked, basically. Then you've got a very, very well-attended school district board meeting the other night that had to be moved to the Alberta Kimball because it was so heavily attended. And there, people overwhelmingly are speaking about not cutting classes, not cutting teachers, and yet, that's exactly what the school board elected to do. What are your thoughts?
Well, I think that, as I said, I think that the lines of communication are broken. And part of the problem with the meeting at Alberta Kimball is that the cuts came out of the blue, it's unclear what's going on, and instead, we have this sort of, we have that report that came out from the superintendent was, was absolutely, you know, horrifying to imagine a district that didn't offer strings, that didn't offer fourth years of foreign languages in any, in any language, or, you know, going to cut, you know, cut out ag completely, going to cut out business classes. I mean, it was a really scary vision of a high school experience in Oshkosh. And I don't quite understand the way it played itself out, because I think, again, the article in the paper yesterday, the administration is sort of backpedaling
Sort of scrambling now.
saying, oh, no, this isn't really the way it is. And a couple of the board members said the same thing. Oh, you know, you don't understand, this is, this isn't the way it is. Yet, why is this a discussion that's going on afterwards? If you're going to propose these cuts, why aren't you giving us a realistic idea of what it means to fire 35 teachers at the high school as opposed to hearing these students who've learned that their schedules are going to radically change and simply saying to them, don't worry, it won't be that bad?
You're paranoid, and you don't know what you're talking about.
That's right.
Yeah, if you were a parent who attended that meeting or didn't, or a student who made a presentation at Kimball, how would you respond to this quote by John Lumberger, who's on the board? Quote, "I just thought there was a lot of paranoia on the part of the students. They came in with conclusions that will hurt their schedules, and maybe they should have waited until they understood what's going on."
Well, you know, as I did see that quote, and I actually am very surprised by that quote, and I think that, again, the problem is this, this issue of trust. I mean, why would the public take the school board's word for this?
Right.
I mean, there's a good, you know, sometimes paranoia is justified.
Yeah, and, and the school board doesn't know what's going on either. For the students to wait until what's going on, just blew me away. What's going on?
You know, it would have been possible, obviously, to say, these are the cuts, let's have the principals really tell us what they look like, and then we'll vote on them.
Right.
Which seems to me the right way to do this. Because, again, I realize that that report, when it came out on, you know, Tuesday before the meeting, is probably not a realistic picture of what's going to happen. But why can't we have a realistic picture before the vote to tell people that this is really what's going to happen, rather than say, oh, don't worry, we'll deal with it later?
Why did that quote of John Lumberger surprise you? You said it was surprising to you.
You know, I know John. I like John, and I think he's dedicated to education. But it strikes me, again, is this perhaps a lack of awareness of the way the community is going to accept that, that report. I mean, this is, as I said, it's a scary report. If you, I don't know if you've discovered this, there's a student Facebook page now that's called, you know, "Oshkosh Students Are Screwed." It's got over 800 students, members of that page, and the students are just, you know, they're terrified that their, their high school career is going to be ruined. Well, why didn't anyone anticipate this? Why didn't anyone talk to these stakeholders before they made the decision?
with these cuts as it relates to some money savings that might be coming down the pike with respect to insurance? I mean, they're working with consultants right now, who have said that possibly even as early as this spring, they could possibly save, like, up to $2 million in their health insurance costs for the district. You know, that, if they're able to save that, well, that $2 million, it at least makes a somewhat of significant dent in the savings that they have to otherwise shave off the budget. Should they maybe have waited with some of this stuff until they, I mean, spring's not that far away?
Well, clearly, I've heard, the justifications are that, you know, layoff notices and schedules have to be done now. And so there's some push to do these things in a hurry. But as I said, and one of the reasons I'm running, is the whole process is backward. We don't know why we're doing this, except for short-term financial reasons. Why aren't we designing something? Why didn't the board, when they met in January at their special session, say, "Okay, well, what is important? What are we going to preserve? What are we not going to preserve? Let's have a plan that's going to look ahead." Because the cuts this spring maybe have to be met by cuts next spring. But what if the cuts this spring don't fit with the cuts next spring? You know, why don't we say, "Okay, let's make some long-range decisions before we cut, before we, you know, eliminate these specific positions or close schools or whatever we're doing." At every stage, I say, "Well, let's plan first. Let's be reasonable as we go forward." And that, and so much of the time, I think, we haven't gotten that. And that's why, that's why the students are afraid. I mean, there's no reason for them to believe that even this is the end. We don't know what's going to happen next year. And there's no foresight.
Surprised or not surprised, I didn't see any cuts from athletics. I don't know whether you did or not. Was there any cuts from athletics in this system?
You know, again, there's no plan here. So the only cuts we've seen is this huge cut to teachers. We haven't seen any discussion about administrators. We haven't seen any discussion about, you know, one of the things that I, we were talking about before is the ORD, which is run out of the school, it's a million dollars of the school budget, which we're one of five districts in the state who pays for that out of school taxes. You know, is there a discussion about shifting that burden someplace else so it won't affect student learning? Those are the kind of, I mean, there are all sorts of discussions that we could be having. Again, one of the things that I noticed is, if you looked at what Green Bay did, Green Bay had to cut $6 million out of their budget. They had a committee of teachers and parents and students and administrators, and they cut $6 million without closing any schools. They took a huge cut in administrative staff by sharing principals, by sharing some, you know, some of the dean positions, et cetera. They saved over $1 million in administrative consolidation. And they saved schools, and they saved teachers. And they, you know, they found $5,000 here and $10,000 there. And they did a really, you know, masterful job using a scalpel to cut the system. What do we have here? $2 million, 35 teachers? It's an axe. And I'd like to go back and say, "Let's use a scalpel."
We do seem to have a fear in this community of involving the public. I mean, yeah, we listen to, we give them lip service, if you will. And we say we're listening, but then at the end of the day, you do the complete opposite. You know, we've seen it to certain degrees at the city council level. We've seen it at the county board level. We've certainly seen it at the school district level. How do we get over that hurdle? How do we remedy that, Carl?
Well, there are two things I would say. I'd say, first, as a representative, you're not always obligated to follow, you're obligated to make the best decision. And sometimes, that might not match what lots of people are telling you. And so it's clear that hard decisions often have to be made in ways that hurt a lot of people. But at the same time, you need to listen. You need to explain. And if you think that's a decision that's going to be unpopular, you should work very, very hard to make sure that people understand why you're making that decision and how that's going to benefit the system, the community, you know, your constituents. And so, and again, so much of what's happened is that we've lost that. And I'm not, you know, again, I want to be open. I want, I have a website. I'm, you know, I'm on Facebook. I'm on Twitter. There's Electronically, it's very easy to reach me. I expect all that to continue if I'm elected. And, you know, I'm very willing to say, and to go, I'm going to go. If people want to talk to me, I think that's an incredibly important thing. Steve Dito and I have been visiting PTOs. We've tried to set up a tour. And again, you know, what a great way to understand the district, except to sit down with parents and learn about their schools. This seems to me as something that would be a really nice regular feature of being on the school board, to say, "Make time, you know, once a month to go and talk to parents at school, so that you know what's happening in the school." Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Finish your time.
I was going to say, the other thing that I've done is I'm on the site council at my own school, Washington, where my kids go.
How old are your kids, and what grade are they in?
I have a daughter who's in fourth grade. And I have a son who's now in first grade. And we've been involved at Washington for a long time. And I've been involved in the site council, and it's been a really eye-opening experience for me in a different way, because the site council is, the way it's conceived at Washington in this year, is very nice. It's a lot of teachers. And so I've really learned what it's like to be a teacher in the Ashkosh School District. And, you know, I've heard, you know, the pluses, the problems that teachers have faced. And again, this is a world that I haven't been introduced before. And if I hadn't gone to that meeting, hadn't been part of that, you know, I wouldn't have the kind of depth of knowledge to see, you know, the way the school district operates on an everyday basis. And that's another place, again, that it'd be nice to keep those contacts, to see others make those contacts, and so that it isn't just going to the board meetings on Wednesday night. It's, you know, at least making a little time. And I know it's a huge commitment of time to be on the school board, to meet with, you know, the groups outside of that, and to say, "Look, I don't have an agenda. Tell me how things are working in your school. Tell me, you know, what can be fixed." In some cases, you might say, "Well, is there waste here we can get rid of? Let's ask the people on the ground," rather than say...
Yeah. You mentioned Steve Dito now. He's one of your challengers or opponents in this race. He does not favor the closing of any schools, if I'm remembering his position correctly. Do you feel that no school should be closed under any circumstance? Or where are your thoughts on that?
Again, where I think we need to start is with education. And for me, the primary focus of being on a board is making sure that we can give students the best education possible. And it's, and it seems to me that it could be, and I don't know if it's the case yet, if there's a possibility that, you know, there might need to be those kind of changes. But if it's going to improve and improve the quality of the district, allow us to keep opportunities for classes at the high school, make sure we keep class size as small as we can within our budgetary constraints, I don't see, I can see, you know, school changes. Now, that being said, the district is very hard to reconfigure. When I actually sit down and say, "Okay, well, if we were going to reconfigure things, how do we do that?" That's a really hard question. I don't think our district has good options in terms of how you reorganize the district, if you just start closing schools. But maybe, again, a new superintendent, a little thinking, maybe those, maybe that would have to happen. But for me, it's, let's think about education first. And our neighborhood schools are great, and I love them. But if we can preserve the quality of education in Ashkosh at the cost of a school, I'm going to vote for preserving the quality of education and not save the building. Because the power of the district is in those teachers, and it's in those students, and it's not where they go to school. I mean, those are the great, those are the resources that I think are worth protecting.
Okay. Well, very good. Well, Carl, why don't you take about 30, 45 seconds and just look right into camera three there. Tell folks why they should vote for you on Tuesday, April 6th.
Oh, well, thank you. I'm running for school board, as I have said today, for a couple of reasons. I'm a concerned parent. I've been actively involved in the schools now for many years at my own school. I've been involved in site council. I have participated in planning sessions for the previous 10-year plan. And so I've been involved and interested in school issues for a long time. I also think that one of the things that needs to change in the current situation is that we need to start thinking about education first. And so as a school board member, I will focus on, I will focus on education, making decisions based on data.
All right. Excellent. We got our hand signals mixed up there a little bit.
Sorry.
All right. Very fine. No, 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 that's fine. And we've been putting up your website throughout the show, but, you know, throughout this segment, but it is carlforkids, and that's Carl with a K, carlforkids.us, right?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thanks so much for being here. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And that's going to do it for us. We'll see you next time. Until then, take good care.